I call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show that it is 9:31 a.m. and all five members of the court are present. We are streaming live on YouTube, and if you're watching and you'd like to call and make a comment, the phone number is (940) 221-2107. Today Commissioner Creswell has the honors. Do we could please stand for our invocation and pledges?
Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, we come to you today just to ask you for guidance and wisdom in this court today. Let us do what is best for the people of this community, dear lord. Dear lord, we ask you to watch over these families that have lost loved ones recently, dear lord, and dear lord, help their hearts to heal and their minds. And dear lord, we thank you for each and every day that you give us this opportunity to come to you and pray. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we will move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments today? We'll move to the tax assessor-collectors' October activity report. It's in your packet. So far this year, she has collected $386,000, whereas this time last year, she had $436,000, so a little bit behind. I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of our hotel occupancy tax, our HOT tax, of $7,016.55 for September of 2023 from the Wildcat Arrangement Resort. And I'd also like to announce that there's a public meeting notice that will be posted soon for the Regional Water Planning Group, Area B. The meeting will be Wednesday, November 15th at 10:00 a.m. We'll move to item four, which is consider the county clerk minutes from the previous meeting. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Creswell. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll move to item number five, which is consider the treasurer's financial report and updates on securities pledged. Treasurer Mullen?
Oh, no update.
No report today, thank you. We'll move to item six, consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable. Madam Officer?
Well, I always have stuff. We're still paying 2023 invoices, we're fixing them. Hopefully this will be closing out after this month, we hopefully have any more. So on 2023, the total is $1,045.66, and out of the general fund is $732.98.
That could be the smallest one you've ever presented.
Probably. Don't brag on it. Here's the FY '24. Total is $172,739.2, and out of the general is $77,856.92.
What are some of the big ones?
Some of the big, and I was gonna talk to y'all. We also had the, and I didn't know if it's on the agenda, about the regional public defender that we budgeted for, but the invoice was actually $11,990, and I think we budgeted over $7,000.
When we were in the budget, we built a budget for this, basically. We called it insurance, to where if we have a capital case, the regional, the Lubbock's, Lubbock will come down and be the public defender for a capital case. Well, we got the bill for that for this year, and it's twice, it's about twice what we budgeted. So it came out to be $11,990.
What that tells me, we're in a group, but if we had a lot of access, that's what wages whether our payment is up or down.
Sure.
So they must be using it all.
Oh yeah, other counties, yeah. But, you know, it's one of those things that I don't think we could afford to be exposed for.
Still, that is what we're costing.
So.
That's contingency problems.
Yeah. Okay.
So there were also some payments to First National for some precinct equipment, precinct one and two, and $11,000 on sale made food, just some of the bigger ones. Rite of passage, which is placement, was a little over $8,000.
Go ahead.
That's on there. And then the Rock Hills were entered exactly for nearly $37,000.
So you want to put that on the agenda? Okay. All right, would you put that on the agenda for the next meeting, please? Thank you. Does, all right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second from Commissioner Shook. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Also, in this, we also got the invoices. We had to pay some of the taxes, and we did get the corrected statements on the property that we own over here. Total of that is $2,379.
Gotcha, so.
Or we gone down from what the other.
Basically, this is on the annex in the rent house over there that we, when we bought that, they put the property tax that the seller would owe. You know, that was part of our closing thing, so that money was already acquired in closing, but they incorrectly had us classified as a governmental entity. So they read, the first bill that came, they charged us property tax. They caught it and fixed that, so.
No cloud, no cloud.
Also, the van for the 4-H is ready, understood?
Yes.
We got, it was one thing that they put on here, and I think Commissioner Shook went and tested how expensive those new windshields are. They have a windshield protection on there for $1,012. That's a five-year seasonal deductible for the windshield. Is that a pretty good, since they are.
You think that's worth doing? Yeah, I would say so.
And also, a five-year bumper-to-bumper for $1,720 added to it. They had also put licenses, let's see, because we're gonna license it here, so they're gonna take off about $170.
Do we get charged a license for, would we get charged that?
No, we're, I guess we'll put exempt tags on it. We'll mark it Young County 4-H.
Gotcha.
Just put the things on the side and have exempt tags. So a little over $88,000 is still available now. Can't really, because I already paid a thousand down. They had to have a thousand down to order it. And we have things like Diver's Inventory Tax and the documentation that we had to pay. So it's okay, we'll write the check for that, including that windshield protection, that bumper-to-bumper. We took this out of contingency, but that's what we had, nobody voted on the corner, that's why I paid the tax.
Okay.
But I need a corrected invoice from him minus the license and the title fee.
And then we already approved all this thirty-four down here, so.
Got it.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Item number seven, discuss and consider employee bonds. Kendra McClatchy, Chief Deputy Tax Collector, $5,000, and Christina Moore, the Deputy Tax Collector, $5,000. We have a motion from Commissioner Creswell. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number eight, acknowledge the deputation, excuse me, in oath of office for Walter Harvey, Deputy County Clerk. A motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Shook. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number nine, consider extension agents' October report request for reimbursement. Kenny Baron, $311.12. Savannah Wilson, $1,136.43. The detail is in your packet. Any questions, comments, or a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Creswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number ten, discuss the October activity report for the jail and sheriff's office. It's kind of like a, just a, it's very similar to the month before.
And some of those this past month were actually pretty big, areas that we had, so. We had a couple of impounds, stuff like that, so.
I think we talked about this before the meeting, but we need to check with the three counties that we're housing prisoners for, and we have not gotten signed documents back, and thus we have not begun billing them with the new rates, but maybe we.
We only had Val and Brock Martin last time.
We had House of Failure almost.
Gotcha. So let's check up with them. At some point, maybe we just start switching our bills, and that might force them to respond. Any questions? Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, item number. Item number eleven, discuss and consider the Grand Chamber of Commerce's request for the inside of the square to be shut down at 3:00 p.m. on November 30th, 2023 for the annual Christmas parade and stroll. The, yeah, they like the inside shut down at 3:00, and they're gonna start shutting the outside streets down at 4:00 for the Christmas parade. We have a motion from Commissioner Creswell. Do we have a second to approve for the shutting down of the inside of the square? Second from Commissioner Shook. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, item number twelve. Rusty Hughes is here to talk about this. Discuss and consider the 4-H shooting range on county property near the Young County Arena. Rusty, why don't you tell us what y'all are thinking about, Dale?
Thank you, Judge Grant. I've been looking at this for quite some time. I represent the 4-H as the rifle-shooting code. We really don't have a place to shoot. We've been using the police range, we've been using the wide range, and we really appreciate all of this. Very difficult for us to keep kids coming. Plus, we like the facilities to prepare them for the competitions. I've been looking into the possibility of seeing if we can find something to build our own. It requires lots of volunteer labor, it requires a lot of things, but we're working on that. But right now, I've located a piece of property owned by the county that's part of the original land that was given to the Junior Livestock Commission to begin building the barn out here at the Young County Arena. It's actually, right here on the map I gave you, 5372. What it is, is it's basically a very heavily wooded lot that's actually, basically goes up the hillside. I'm not sure if it's good for anything else. There's areas that's a little flatter, but we need something to cut into the side of the hillside and shoot our .22 rifles into. My plan is to see if we can do a feasibility study on this, see if everything's on the up and. If it's actually gonna work, and I need y'all's permission to see if we can do that and kind of get y'all on board with the possibility of creating this shooting. Young County shootings, or Young County Forest Shooting Arena, basically is what I'm thinking.
In talking to Grant, it's my understanding that the Arena Board did discuss this at an Arena Board meeting. And the one thing he said that came out of that Arena Board meeting, and y'all can correct me because y'all are on the Arena Board, is that the Arena Board thought it was a good idea, but they wanted it limited to .22 caliber and below until, you know, more time can be, until they can assess the noise and if it's disturbing the animals and everything, because.
Does the 4-H use a larger caliber than a .22? Not in the rifle, no. Properly, .22 is always used.
But don't y'all do, y'all do shotguns, too.
There is a shotgun division. Does the possibility exist that we could find a room out there and create a whole? Yeah, absolutely. But it is a little bit louder.
I think the recommendation is right now, let's just go .22 caliber.
Let's see what's out. Let's see what it's capable of carrying for us. It may not even work, but I'd like the chance to look.
And you also have homes out there, too. So you've got several homes around it.
Most of them are.
You've got animals at the arena. Let's start small.
Absolutely. And I will come back when we're done the initial looking, and I'm sure Jimmy and Stacy will be helping probably Scott as well. Let's go have a look at it, see if it's worth it. See if it's worth doing, if it is, and we'll kind of proceed from there.
Well, see, when we originally went and looked at that, we looked way on down the hill from where you're showing this part being now.
I don't remember where you're talking about, Stacy.
Well, when we came in here, what you said was this lot right here.
Yeah.
Let's see. Yeah, we looked here before, and I didn't think that would be very good.
You talked about that side of the.
Yeah, but that would be a lot better than what we looked at at first.
This actually, this actually is original, there were Matt's houses there. So this is elevation, I would guess, 68 feet. So it gives us a natural hillside to shoot into.
Get a natural burn marky there.
I'm sorry? Get a natural burn marky there. That's why I think it might be an underlocation. It may not be, but.
Do we need a motion for him to?
We're doing, what we're doing is we're looking for a motion to allow 4-H to do a study to see if this is a place they'd like to move forward on building a rifle range.
I'd like to have a motion.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Creswell, and a second from Commissioner Wiley. Are there any comments or discussion items on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Rusty.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you. I gotta go to work, I'll see you in place.
You bet. All right, item number thirteen, discuss and consider accepting the bid for build-out of our Young County Annex, which is presented by Justin Gilmore from Level Five Architecture. Hey, Justin, how are you?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner, appreciate your time this morning. Just want to kind of give a brief recap of this project. Obviously, several months ago, we started looking at the feasibility of whatever it costs to renovate the existing buildings that you currently purchased, recently purchased. Put together some budgets. We received one bid on this project for the entire build-out. It was a little bit over budget. That bid was received on October 1st, I believe, and then we presented it to Commissioners Court on October 23rd. And since the Commissioners Court on October 23rd, the direction was to kind of go back and see if there's some, what we call, value engineering, some opportunities to really save some money on the project. And we have done that with Manmade Construction, the one bid that we did receive. So Justin Smalley is here with Manmade Construction. I want to say that Dustin and Commissioner Wiley really, I think they've met on site a couple times, brought in different trades, brought in different people to look at the project, and have presented a budget today that saves quite a substantial amount of money based upon the original budget that was, or proposal was put forward. So again, this is where we're at with the project. We want to make sure that, you know, everybody has an understanding of what we've done. We reevaluated the air conditioning systems, the electrical systems on the project. One change, or two changes, I will say, that we've made. Previously, in the design plans, we had anticipated putting a lot of stone around the base of the project and on the front facade of the project, just to accent some more of that. That is aesthetics, it's something that's not necessary towards the overall project, so we have presented the opportunity to remove that stone out of the project and save those dollars. The other thing was the second-floor mezzanine. So up above the new offices we're putting in there, we anticipated putting, it was about a 4,800-square-foot mezzanine, just strictly for storage on top. After evaluating that, and not only structural systems, the cost of those structural systems, but also the handicap accessibility. We were trying to push the envelope a little bit with that, but our handicap accessibility specialist came back and said, no, maximum 3,000 square feet. That's what's allowed by code. We can't go up to 4,800 square feet. So we scaled that back to be just under that 3,000 square feet on that second-floor mezzanine. That does not require us to have an elevator to access that four-foot-height storage plane up there. So again, that saves quite a bit of dollars on that, and then there's a little bit of cost savings with reducing the structural systems on that as well. So these are the presentations that, again, Manmade Construction has come up with on this project, and we'd be here to answer any questions, I think Dustin is too.
Well, I would like to just acknowledge Commissioner Wiley. He has been working on this and finding ways to save money on this from the start. So I appreciate the effort that you've put into this. This is, you definitely put a lot of work into this. I'm in favor of kind of stripping some of the aesthetics back. We can always put that on later at another time, but you get this thing closer to what we originally budgeted for it. And yeah, shrinking, shrinking that storage space, although the storage would have been nice. It saves a lot of steel, and the elevator would be a killer.
It would. It would, and you know, keep in mind with this storage area, I'm gonna say on the low side, you kind of have to crawl to box it back in those corners. In the center of the building, you do have head height to be able to walk around. So that's all it is, is just storage. So add an elevator for something like that, it doesn't make sense, or a lift. Plus, the maneuverability to get around to those additional spaces that we had, which were up around the lobby and sitting on top of the veteran services officer's office. You had to kind of duck to get into those little nooks and crannies. So we've concentrated that maximum 3,000-square-foot allow area into the most usable head height space possible.
So we're gonna take what we're not using for storage and use it to run our ducks into our other rooms, and make it more usable, that away. So it's not dead space, it's spiritual space. Which is saving money.
Yes.
I would say mechanical split units now. Does that have anything to do with the other movement of outside units? We're still, we're still gonna do that.
Yes, sir. So the existing units that are there on the outside of the building? Correct, those stay there. The changing to the split system, so think about the split system, just like what you have in your house. You've got the, air compressors are outside, you've got your blower, you got it inside. Our original plan on this, because we created all this mezzanine storage, we only had about 18 inches of structural space between the ceilings on the first floor and the deck on the second floor. So in order to get air conditioning systems up in there, we had to do kind of a little bit of a special unit, which is called a mini-split. All that is, is you still have the compressors on the outside, but you have individual, you know, two-foot-by-two-foot boxes that are individual blowers, so that you don't have to do the duct work in between the interstitial space. Well, now with freeing up some of that area, we can go back to the more traditional, like residential-style split systems, and then run duct work to hit all those spaces. So it's kind of a, I think a dual combination of cost savings potential there.
We're gonna do what I called an old bid, with a local guy, who assisted on the west side around to the opposite side.
I don't think. We're gonna leave the two over there that's on that side over there, and the two over here. It's the same deal. And we're taking the existing units inside and repurposing them to be able to use them inside our building, our rooms and everything. As a matter of fact, the roadwork today, changing out the units itself today. They'll also redo it inside to the left. So once they get done with that, all we're gonna do is tighten electricity, be ready to roll on that part.
Okay, so the units on the west side are not going to be able to drive through?
No.
No, sir. We've, and again, just barricades around those, so we position that drive-through to where we can still have our accessibility parking and the drive-through.
If this bid's approved, when do you anticipate construction beginning, and when do you anticipate being done?
I am not gonna speak.
So we're the do.
We get along, but I'll let you back.
He's the face, you're the important guy.
Yeah, so please, we have a bid. So I'm Justin Smalley, President of Manmade Construction. So yeah, if approved, we want to be starting as soon as we can. It's always difficult, it's a lot of schedules that aren't ours. As far as Manmade, we'll be able to start with the, with the Commissioner Wiley. We're actively working on a project over the next week, Church of Cracks. So more overlap, we can get on those two and there is for us. So it's gonna depend on some subcontractor lead times coming on the holidays. It's always difficult scheduling. I would hope, anticipate, see like physical, getting on-site activity before the end of year. And as far as duration, it should be a six-month project, round it up to seven. We're gonna overlap some holidays. It was a little bit of that time in there, but.
Sure.
Really straightforward. On the technical side of things, fantastic rear project inside. The guys like that, it's terrible outside, they should just worry about it.
Yeah.
Look at the end date, probably somewhere in July.
Which works really well for Elections Office as well, because that gives their time to be able to move all their equipment over there and start hosting the presidential elections, which will be a high impact for our office.
That HVAC also. Also address the timeline things as well. By going conventional units, you're going units that are inside. Nothing really special work out there anymore, so. We're gonna work on a little bit. Yeah, it takes some potential scheduling, but it's on the table, too.
Any questions? We have a motion to accept this updated budget for the build.
I'll move.
A motion for Commissioner Wiley. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Shook. Any discussion or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be bringing the final contract for this back to Commissioners Court for approval.
Okay.
But I'll get on that, hopefully we get on the next agenda for those people. And talk to the ratings.
Give you help.
Thank you all for your time.
Chop, chop, get effort. All right, we'll move to item number 14. Discuss and consider the Young Central Appraisal District, 2024-25, of the Board of Directors. We got our official ballot. The nominees are Jeff Dickinson, Kyle Henson, Z.T. Burkett, Ben Wilson, Kyle Henson, oh, I'm sorry, I said Kyle Henson twice, and Mike Sykes. We have 1,114 votes out of 4,381. three hundred and eighty-five. We did nominate Mike Sykes. I recommend using all of our votes on Mike Sykes, what do y'all think?
So good.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, we spend all one thousand and fourteen votes on Mike Sykes. We have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Didn't see you there. We have item number fifteen, discuss and consider making the all-need tax assessor position a full-time position. Our tax assessor collector, Kristy Centers, is here to present.
I worked the numbers, that's all I'll explain, I don't want to fall. Do you want to go ahead and do the monologue?
About second, maybe in fact.
Yeah. I worked this up last Thursday. Kristy talked to me about Diana's retiring and I was going to have to.
Yes, I found out recently that Miss Diana would be retiring, this was after budget was already done, and. I know.
Jim, maybe.
As you know, Diana has been our part-time, full-time, she does get insurance and benefits, but she only works thirty hours a week, so a week container is fifteen dollars. Fifteen seventy-five for F line twenty-four. So I went in and figured the difference of what it would take for this year to finish out the weeks after Diana retires, but of course, we need to hire someone before then because they have to go through all the certifications and pass the test, and then try, a lot of training with us, and then move them over to work with Diana some, so.
So what was, what did we budget, what's in the budget for that position?
Because I put on here, well, for ninety, do we have to make your count?
Do what?
I'm going to get a budget.
Where we figured out, thirty hours a week, thirty-two times fifteen seventy-five, we just figured that out.
Four nine nine.
Shouldn't that twenty-four thousand five seventy in there, that's a fifteen seventy-five an hour amount of hours she works. It's the part-time, full-time, and forty-nine.
Remember what number you are, Kristy?
Four ninety-nine.
Four ninety-nine.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so we have assist, we have fewer, part-time, full-time, budgeted twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. So twenty-four five seventy.
So I took what, because we'll pay Diana, then we'll have to pay her off for any vacation, she'll get another two weeks vacation, I think, from January first, so we'll have to pay her off, so I estimated what would be left in there, I estimated about fifteen thousand six hundred. She doesn't retire till the first of February, so yes, ma'am.
And so where would you pull the money from?
Well, there'll be money left in that line, but I estimated fifteen thousand six hundred left in there because she'll be leaving.
Correct, but then where would the rest of mine be?
Well, that's, I don't know what we're talking about. So I figured with the extra and what we needed for back in retirement, I'm talking about that.
You know for sure you can't get anybody in thirty hours a week.
No, it's just that I've had so many people from all these, say, you know, y'all work longer hours, and, you know, and that's been a big issue for the citizens over there. They would like to see it open full-time, and someone there eight to four.
People all even want it to be full-time, and then you're going to have part-time jobs, everybody just work after that, you know, how much.
That is true. So Kristy, had you estimate paying someone that's like for the, this first year, like eighteen dollars an hour is the amount I figured on here, and we'd need a little over twenty-one thousand dollars, maybe a little less, depending on Diana takes vacation and doesn't pay for it, just depends on what she carries over.
And then we have the insurance and all that.
The insurance is already in there.
And we've already, we're already.
And so if, if she hired her, and there's a sixty-day waiting period, and then Diana be leaving, so when the insurance on Diana is over, then the new person will become the new person, so I don't think we'd need any extra in that insurance line.
This is not in my concern.
So, now there's nowhere in the budget.
Yeah, we wish.
I have a couple good ones that have applied, but I'm going to interview.
Five.
Eight to four.
Eight to four.
Because they have to get to the bank before it closes, so they need time to count up and then go to the bank.
Or it's that long?
They get a lunch, eight to twelve, one to four, they're going to be the same hours as Graham Office is. I think with, because I still have some that don't even know there's an office there, I think if we do some advertising, buy some advertising in the newspaper on the market sign, talk to some people, you know, and get some advertising over there, and a lot of issues is the building. I mean, that building, you can't go in the front of it, and a lot of people don't know, you've got to go around to the side to get into the building, even though there is a sign posted on the window, hence the road, they just say, oh, it's closed off.
There's going to be some signage down the hall.
It, it needs something over there. Because I guess those front doors are still shut. Have y'all seen pictures of the dimensions?
Oh, I've been over there numerous times, yeah.
I've had Laura send me some pictures this morning, and.
What's the damage from?
Water.
Oh.
So we counted.
So we rent that, we rent that building from the city alone, so we don't own the building, we pay rent.
I called for the city council or muster them up.
Yeah, well, they've, and they've, they've applied for insurance, and, you know, they've, but.
It's right on the top, they're right on the top, it's hard to look for it.
I mean theoretically, I mean, we were going to put a bunch of money in here, we wanted to buy it all.
Uh-huh, and it's all the way across, so.
The insurance, they will use insurance, that's not damage, that's just.
They're trying.
Yeah, it's a lot of seasoning, that's so true.
They don't have a lot of extra. They, they do recognize, you know, they've got the, they've got the police department in there, so they. But they're also talking about building a new building for the police, police department, so the police department might be moving out sometime.
So you need twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars from the job we're here for next, so we get the next budget, right?
And next year, if anything were done, probably go raise a budget.
I made a motion, we take it out of contingency. All right, Commissioner Shook has made a motion that we take the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars out of contingency, is there a second?
Oh, sure.
Second from Commissioner Wiley, is there any discussion or comment on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five there, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move to item number sixteen, discuss and consider investing in a government pool. Mr. Treasurer?
Okay. So I've been looking into the prospects of doing some additional things with the county's money until, you know, it needs to be, needs to be spent. Obviously, y'all know how this works, we have money that, that we're not spending yet, so, you know, we want to maximize where we can. And so the government pools is something that I've looked at, Judge Lynn and I have met with a couple of companies, and that I'm proposing today. The first one is called TechStar. We're already, we already have a relationship with TechStar. I'm just asking for, it's been since, I think, two thousand and eight or something, has been any activity since then with this company. Got to update me as the financial officer and things of that nature, but, you know, I'm asking today that we would authorize, or reauthorize using TechStar as, and these are government pools, in accordance with the Public Funds Investment Act, which obviously all of these, each of these companies are highly rated and highly recommended and are used by many, many other counties and government entities for their, for their deposits. What, what I mentioned in pools, the reason I mentioned in pools is because while their rates are going to be very comparable to the CD rates that we have at Sierra Bank, these are completely liquid, okay, they're daily, they're, they're, they're available any day after, you know, prior to like four o'clock in the afternoon. Now, if you're going to pull out, you know, a million dollars that day, they would like some notice or something like that, you know, maybe beforehand on, anticipate we would ever do something in a, you know, like a crunch or something of that nature. But enter packet, you should have, see what kind of rates that they're offering. I just came back from the Texas Public Funds Investment Conference that was in Houston, and from the indicators, all of the indicators that have gotten from there, the economists that spoke, and the financial people that spoke, and participating rates are going to still be up in this range for at least another, another year. If there's not an increase, we'll still be kind of in the same range, and I, I did like what one of the presenters, who's a professor from Texas State, and he said, you know, this is actually the normal interest rates are actually what's normal. I mean, you know, and thinking back, you know, I financed my house, paid off, you know, several years ago, but I financed it at eight percent, and it was an ARM, so it, it went up and down, but I don't think it ever went below six, or six and a half percent, you know. And so everybody's clamoring about the, you know, the interest rates of borrowing, but this is going to be, this is what it should normally be. So I'm expecting, you know, I think that gives a little more confidence as to what our rates are going to be, and then how can we take advantage of those. I will note that from this conference, two people that are on the Investment Academy Advisory Group for the Texas Association of Counties, one is Mr. Zach Brewer with Texas Class, and that's the other company I presented, and the other, Hilltop, is Ms. Brett Lauer, who is a manager with Hilltop Securities, asset manager, which manages TechStar. Okay, so these are well, well-known, highly reputable companies, and so the difference is, these are, these government pools, they are investing mainly in government agencies, but they also have a, another side, TechStar has logic, which is mainly investing heavily in commercial paper, and that's where they're getting more interest or more return or yield is on those accounts that are invested in commercial paper. And so these are highly, highly rated companies, they're, and they have to be to conform with Public Fund Investment Act, and as they say, you know, this is our livelihood, this is what we do. If we miss, then, you know, we won't have our livelihood. And so, of course, they're investing Harris County, Tarrant County, Dallas County, many municipals, and so forth, and, you know, I did have to sit, or the guys that were sitting behind me were with Harris County, and said, what's your, what's your budget? A billion. You don't have to talk about money to that. A billion, really, a billion dollars, so, you know, they go, well, you know, you know, so, and obviously, you know, they, these big counties, they're, they're putting their faith in, in these pools as well. I just understand in the past, it had, we haven't had the money or the interest rates spent so low, it hasn't really been, you know, it hasn't been really feasible for us to do it, and so what I'm, I'm asking for is obviously being TechStar and their sister, I guess sister side of the commercial paper side, be logic, and then Texas Class is just a singular government pool and or commercial paper, depending on what account you set it in. There's a variety of things that we can do with that if we want to, but.
What would the share rate be on that, where we could actually, if we needed to draw them, that we could?
Daily.
Is that it, daily?
Daily liquidity.
Daily liquidity, that's, that's my point, is the reason, instead of now, you know, we have our, we have some CDs coming due in December and January, and I think we have, you know, we initiated some back in September for a six-month, and it's a good rate, well, we did one for a year or so. You know, I initially thought, well, let's stagger these, you know, every two months or a monthly thing, but the totals make a whole lot more sense. We're getting the same, pretty much the same rate, maybe it couldn't, you know, maybe even a little better, depending on how the rates change, but, but the, you know, it is, they're very upfront about how it's this day, you put it in today, you want it tomorrow, now you're not going to be able, but, you know, something happens, you need that money. I mean, they do sophisticated work, you've got your money, you plan what your budget expenses are going to be, and they'll sweep in and out, you know, sweep your money in and out, but I don't think we want to do that.
I've sat in these meetings with Kyle, and I'm, I'm in favor of these, but this makes total sense, and they, they adjust their rates daily, so in a rising market, it's going to, it's going to move pretty quickly going up with the market. Same thing on a declining market, it's going to move pretty quick going down, so I don't think you want to get rid of your CDs, because CDs are going to, are going to, you know, be a little, lock in some long-term rates.
Right.
But another nice thing about these accounts is you can set up sub-accounts, so we'd be able to put like a, we could have a hot tax sub-account, so we can, you know, for hot tax that we don't spend very often.
Right.
We can have it over there, and it can, it can be enjoying an accelerated return, and it can also be easy to account for it, because we're going to keep it separate. Same thing for ARPA money, we can have an unlimited amount of sub-accounts to help us keep that track, you know, keep that money separate. I do think we need to be conscious, because this will be moved for our auditor, that we don't necessarily want to be moving money back and forth daily, less, you know, maybe, you know, once a month, or once we get more accustomed, we can do it maybe once a week or twice a month or whatever, but, you know, just kind of, we know what we're going to spend each month, and then we can make a transfer over, so it's one, one, one entry versus every day this in and out, so I think we should just, we should be conscious of not creating excess work.
Right, well, it is, you know, my territory. Right, well, it is, you know, in the territory for us, and so we're gonna, we're gonna take it small.
And we start like with money market money?
And recommendations.
We start with money market money, CD money and not messing with the checking account?
Well, we got, well, you know, yeah, I would, I mean, I really, yeah, the money market for one. The, because there's restrictions on money market, and we need how much you can take out. So that's a good place, but like the ARPA hotel, stuff like that, that we're collecting, and there's limited ways for that to be spent, I think it's an ideal place for that, you know?
There's a question that just come to my mind when we were talking to TechStar. Because TechStar is where we had our money when we got bombed. We made a, that year, the interest rate was tremendous. Made a lot of money in that, but it cost us.
Yeah.
And what I mean by costing us was, we had to pay back.
Arbitrage.
Arbitrage money because of that.
That's only on bonds.
That's only on bonds. That's why we made sure it doesn't affect what we had.
No, no, no. And besides that, now, in my schooling with the arbitrage that I've been through, having to pay the money's not a bad thing because you still made the money.
Still made the money, yeah.
So, you know, they look at it like, oh, this is paying, but at the same time, they make, and it's, of course, there was a reason for that. Actually, there were more people, more entities selling more bonds than they needed so they could gain interest on it.
Makes total sense.
So that's the point of the arbitrage, anyway.
So the ARPA money, we get to keep any interest.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's protected there, yeah.
And the way we're set up, we get all of our money at the front end, right? We get all our tax money in December, January, February, but then we, we've got to spend it much later through the year. When we went through who, who else is investing in this, it was kind of a who's who of cities, counties, and school districts and hospital districts. Several familiar names. I mean, it's, you know, we're, anything we're coming into this late, we're not at the front.
City of Hollins is with Texas Class already. You know, so that's the one local, I think the school district uses someone else. And the hospital district does something else, but, you know, it, it's like Newcastle and Hollins, I mean, they'll be, they'll be using one of these people. And there, there's, these are not the ones. These are the ones that I really, first of all, Texas Class does something a little different than anybody else. They compound daily and pay daily. Now, the others will compound daily, but you don't get paid that until the end of the month. So Texas Class, you get just a little bit more, you know, for your money. But they're very similar, they're all going to have similar yields. These are net of any fees, so there will be no fees. These are all what the, the yields that they are, are presenting are those yields net of any fees.
You just backed up good, correct?
No. They will be investing in, they will be investing in, the government pools will be investing in government agencies, okay? But that could be anything from treasuries to Fannie Mae's to whatever, okay?
It's not insured.
The Logics, I mean.
Some of the investments are insured, but these accounts are, these are, these are not insured.
Please take it.
And they.
But on the other, on the other side of that.
Armageddon.
Armageddon, yeah.
Or, yeah, if, if, if anything goes wrong with them, we're in worse shape.
And the government, and the, the government, or the corp, or the, the bonds are all triple A rated bonds, I mean, it's.
And it has to be, I mean, they're, they're regulated for that, but.
So the recommendation is to, some of these, we already have accounts, they're just inactive, but to participate in the TechStar, participate in the Logic, and to participate in Texas Class. So it's, the TechStar and the Logic are with one group, and then Texas Class, they've got two different funds. So the recommendation is that we, we participate in all four?
Yes, we're allowed to now, you know, we'll, we'll, because I want to go ahead and get that set up so that we have. If we don't want to use it, that's fine.
Yeah.
But, or we may like, and the other recommendation from some of the conference events is, you know, have more than one fund, because you may not be happy with this, we may not be happy with TechStar, but we're happy with Texas Class. Or Texas Class may do something we're not happy about, and we don't want to have to go in, because we have to do a resolution to enter with any of these. You, Commissioner has to authorize the county to do that. So, you know, I would say just get on board so that we have that available. And my recommendation that Cheryl and I would be the signers, okay?
Hundred percent. All right, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion that, that our treasurer set up accounts for Texas Star, Logic, and with Texas Class, their two funds, to go, to go through the paperwork to set those, set those accounts up. It's not an authorization to move money into it, it's just to get those accounts set up. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Wiley, is there any discussion or comment? Fire what?
Well, he had to come back to us to get authorization to put money into this.
We're going to need to come up with, this court here is going to need to set up an investment policy on how that's going to work. So we're gonna, we will need to decide and give him authorization on how we're going to use that. Whether we, every time an investment gets put over there, or we authorize that a percentage be invested in there, kind of like we've authorized that a percentage of CDs be invested. So that, that investment policy will come from the five of us.
Well, we already have one in place, but I mean, y'all can modify our, if you want. And it includes, you know, the, the best, our current investment policy includes these as.
Doesn't?
Yes, it already includes these too, as investment tools. So.
But we can draw that, I mean, that's, that comes from.
Because I gave, I gave each company our investment policy so that they can make sure it conforms to, you know, that we are, that we have that authorization. So we don't have to redo the investment policy. But, you know, whatever recommendation is, you know, that Joe Abbott's willing to go for. If these are good on the market, rates are going up a little bit. Yeah, and then, and then while I'm, while I'm just saying, if we see rates are declining, then we may look at some long-term CDs or whatever.
Now, when the market's going down, this is going to be better than, it's going to be a little bit better than a money market on the going down. But it won't be as good as a CD that's locked in, but then again, when you lock in a CD, you miss all the upside of there's another increase. So it's, there's a little.
And the other side, and the other side, now, we are, our, our, when we talk about FDIC, you're only up to five hundred thousand dollars, okay? The bank has to secure, has secured, has pledged securities to, to back all, but we don't know what else securities are. They could be collateral in, I mean, they could be commercial paper too. Now, you know, I don't expect them, I wouldn't expect Sarah to do that, our bank to do that, but that can happen. And so, you know, those are some things, just as well, whether you're in the pool or you're at the bank, you know, you still have some exposure, I would say. I mean, it's not all, and, you know, it's not all locked in as, as we would, we might think.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, are there any more questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you, Kyle. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider the two thousand twenty-four holiday schedule. Marcia and Cheryl and Timmy came up with thirteen days. Cheryl asked eighteen, asked for eighteen?
No, I asked for fourteen. Christmas Eve and Christmas, we should always have two days in Christmas.
So the proposed, the proposed holiday schedule would be New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Philammon's Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, which is unfortunately a Wednesday this year, or next year, and that comes up to be thirteen. It's just one of these, this is one of those weird times where there's, there's no way to do.
No, but we had, we had Christmas Eve, so that would help.
Would be. So that, that is, that is what our Holiday Nomination Committee came up with, these thirteen days. Open the floor to attack.
I think two days of Christmas.
I, I went for zero days.
You did, that's why you weren't only committed. But anyway.
What do y'all think?
I second your recommendation.
Of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Why twenty-five, because Christmas is on the third.
So, okay, so are you making a motion that we have a fourteen-day county holiday and add Christmas Eve, Tuesday, Christmas Eve as a holiday? Okay, so we have, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
It's Christmas, guys.
In the holiday spirit, I'll second.
You kind of look like Santa Claus over there now.
Oh, hello.
Or, no, you're an elf.
I, I, I want to remove my second.
All right, we have, we have two people who are trying to position themselves as the favorite people in the courthouse. The motion and the second. Any discussion or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, congratulations.
Fourteen days.
You were the ultimate winner on this, well done.
Yes, you were pushing for that. Going back to eleven.
Santa and Zell. All right, so item eighteen, this is to acknowledge the request for reimbursement in reference to the hydraulic rescue tools for the Young County Volunteer Fire Department and County Engine Number Three, sent to us from Graham City Manager Eric Garrity. These are, these, this, we authorized this previously for the ARPA funds, we had the presentation for this a couple of weeks back, but we got that invoice, what was it, is it in the back?
Uh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two sixty-three.
Right, we, we had authorized a little bit more, it ended up being seven hundred and fifty dollars less than what we'd authorized, but I would like the court to, by vote, acknowledge, acknowledge this payment. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley to accept it. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Rogers, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number nineteen, discuss adding Rooney Road to County Road Maintenance List presented by Jimmy Wiley, precinct four. Gentlemen, so could you please, just for the record, give us y'all's names?
Preston Ford.
Preston what?
Ford, F O, F O R D.
Thank you.
Dan Purvis.
All right, what do y'all got?
Sorry about my tire, I come from the DLV, I was set through on border operation, I've been retired there about a few years. So I'm transferring here to Graham, I'm building my forever home, I live in my life, two kids, five and seven-year-old. My brothers lived here for summer years. We have a section of roadway that's been closed off, this, this big gate at all. I'm under contract now on about a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar house. He's about to sign, but they don't know the way to get into the property. It's eleven hundred foot of crowded road, about eight yards wide, allow all the school buses, ambulances to come down, trash, trash gap.
Is this, is this, this one, is this what we're talking about here? And do you, where's your property on this?
Right where the, right where the red.
So you own this property here?
I own half of it, and I own the other half.
Who owns the property on here?
That's one of them.
Who?
That's one of them. You know.
Where's, where's, is this the edge of your property here?
That's where Jack County Maintenance stops, and then it just.
Where's your fence?
My fence is just, I don't know.
And I took a. Now it'll show it better.
Like a bulldozer, with my own money to try to show. That red pickup is where it starts, and this stake is where the property line is. I mean, there's no low water crossings or no culverts, it's straight.
Do you have an easement now? How do you get on your property?
Uh, there's a side gate.
Where's your gate?
It's a, there's a, there's a side gate through here, trying to stop all the construction.
But you have an easement right there now?
Concrete truck told me.
It's been there for years, it just got closed off.
Is the easement this line here?
It'll start then, there, you just can't, right, I'm sorry, right, right there.
And where the red line is on y'all's, that's, that's the, the easement.
Jack County Maintenance is Fox Road, Rooney Road to that point, and then it becomes Young County. Trying to finish my house, and he's trying to get his house started.
And we already have nine-one-one addresses to both properties. And just, you know, even with the nine-one-one address, you know, you can't, if somebody got injured on the property, you know, they, they wouldn't have access, you know, ambulance doesn't have access, fire department doesn't have access. There was a fire, I spoke with Mr. Wiley, I think it was last week, and there was a fire over on the Loving Ranch last year, and I went out there to remove my tractor from the property, and I told the fire departments that were out there, you gotta cut the fence, just get on it, you know? But there, there's no access to get to the backside of any of those properties.
My bulldozer guy did it for me, I paid for it out of pockets, nineteen-five. We've already bulldozed it out of pocket, the material itself is thirteen, thirteen thousand. You know, my next is on the four hundred thousand dollar house at a certain property tax value. It's fifty-six hundred dollars a year taxes down.
Does this fall under like a county road, or is this really a private road?
It's, it's county.
It's county road.
Even when I went down and talked with the nine-one-one lady, I can't remember her name. Harley. You know, she knew exactly what I was talking about, and she said, yeah, that's, that's a county road.
Even on my survey, it says twenty-four foot county easement. In order to build my house, it's a, it's a.
Easy, that's not a county road, that's an easement.
This had been in plenty, as far as I know, the county hasn't touched that road. I've got a hand, there's been it thirty years plus in that precinct, he's, he's, he's never been anything but.
Right.
It's in Jack County.
Twenty Road. It's on twenty-nine fifty.
So Harley's going to bring this road.
Yes, it's first road.
Yeah, past, past this red truck.
Yeah, it goes east and west.
You know, and this is our fence line, and this right here is this gentleman, the Sloan's fence line. You know, so this has always been there, it's just been brought up to where, you know, so we had it dozered.
How much, how much y'all own on the left-hand side there?
On this side right here?
On the south side.
It's ninety-four, I think it's ninety-four and a half.
And it's Sloan's owns the rest of it?
He owns this side over here.
This way.
He owns this property on this side.
He owns the north side?
Correct.
Yes.
The north side of Rooney Road, so, you know, even past this red truck, that's all Sloan's property on this side of the road. I'm seeing.
This house here, your claim and division, Jack County.
Right off County, I come with Karen, right here is my cousin. Right here is a line, that's a Jackville County line right here, which is not far from Karen's house.
And on the survey, when I was, or when I was talking to Harley, it actually showed Karen's property, all these young counties.
Yes.
And she couldn't make it today. She works for a home health company, so.
We, we have.
It is, and right now the property that we're, you know, it, with it just being tagged out, all ninety-four and a half, all the county's getting is roughly about a hundred and twenty dollars.
A year.
A year on taxes because it's tagged out. And when you, when you build his house and then I build my house, you're gonna be looking at, you know, roughly eleven to twelve thousand dollars a year that the county's gonna be collecting.
And we just took a random, Jimmy or Randy Joe, whatever it was.
Tell you about a cow. And y'all had yours out.
Well, the property's tagged out, but when you buy the house, though, the, the property that the house is gonna be.
But you're gonna homestead it.
But you're gonna homestead it at some point.
The, the main thing is.
Why can't finish the house?
The, the killer thing with something like this right here, there's a big process to do it, but also too, the time, the mileage to get around there to it, just for that long section. I talked to Terry Ward, he's the commissioner of Jack County up in that part, and he is, his guy is dragging down two Terrence's ass. And then turning that league back out.
Right.
Is what they do.
Well, they actually go up to Sloan's gate.
Yep.
You know, which is, which is Young County.
Yeah, yeah, they do that. I talked to him and said.
Would Jack County be interested in a member local agreement between us if we did accept something like this?
Well, he said no.
Okay.
Because they're in the same situation. The problem, and one of the reasons why they do go up to there, they gotta figure out a way to turn back around because there's not enough room. The fence on both sides of that road are up there, they're deep. And it's real close together and it's not enough room to turn the motorway around.
See, and we're gonna be moving our property line.
You gotta be on the trash truck and my school bus.
Right, we're gonna move our fence right here into our property to make a big entryway for his kids to get on and off the school bus. The school bus is gonna have to turn around.
I mean, they start.
You know, and we might be able to even do something like, you know, you know where Dennis's house is, his big old round driveway. We could even do something like that. It's just, you know, we can't.
Which is school bus. Jack County.
Well, his kids are gonna be going to ground.
Does the Graham school bus gonna come out there?
No. You know, Ryson, Ryson goes down Rooney Road in Jack County and picks up, you know, or, I don't think they pick up anymore because Terrence's kids are opening up the drive, but they drop off, uh, the grandkids over to Dennis at the end of the day. But what I'm saying is if we would move our fence line in to give enough room for, you know, if Jack County did agree to it, that they'd be able to turn around on our property.
That's, that's where we're at going with this. Since they're already over there.
Which one?
Would you interrupt the break?
Yeah.
The house is already there.
That house is already. And so the road goes to right there. And then the road, okay, but current road goes like that. But then y'all have an easement to get to here. So this is, these are y'all's properties, right?
Terrence's house. This is your property.
Oh, we made this to here. That's where I can't, I can't reach my house.
But, but my, my, my question though is, I mean, how do y'all, if, if this is, these are y'all's properties, right? These are two properties we're talking about?
I'm assuming, sir, I'm not sure. Yes, we access it right.
Where do you get, where, from where?
We got the drive on the dirt. Right now.
We had to drive through the dirt three years and then this is where I'm trying to put my house. This is just a straight shot.
So where's his little point is right here, which is very little spot, that is, is at his gate placement for his house. Based off of my text and my, so.
My property is.
Okay.
The forty-six and a quarter after that. And what we were talking about then is if the county agreed to doing the road, just take it up to where our two property lines meet and just do a shared driveway and make a big entryway to where anything that needs to be turned around, that they can turn around right there.
You on the drill, you order Will, you hit? Come on to listen to me.
No, I think he, they were gonna call Irvin. They didn't know who to call, the people that were gonna be doing the drilling. And I told them that they need to get Irvin because he keeps wrecking everything.
That's a county road. That's a county road that exists.
Right, where that, where he's having to build it.
So is this a county road?
They're saying that the whole front piece is considered a.
Where does Jack? That's the county line, right here.
Not water, but flitting. So he's having to build, we're both gonna have to build seven hundred feet into the property.
Is that not?
Soil right there. This is Young County, it's soil. It, it runs, isn't it? How this, the, what the dirt is designed, what kind of.
This road used to just be a sixes.
Right.
We did not have any addresses on it.
Yeah, we, uh, we hit quite a few rock, though. There was a lot of rock when we were going into the property. And, uh.
I've never heard of making a county road for just one person.
Just need to take our tractor because it's a creek that runs to the, through the front of that property.
This is the third.
Tank over here and a hot tank. And all that rainwater runs off the backside of that property down into the avenue. The tank fills up. Had no way to go.
I'm here for the next, for y'all caring about that property. Three years and tried to be disorganized here. Finally we get to do this because my wife's full of removing their job.
So what's the history on this easement that's here?
It's been there as far, as long as my grandmother owned the property. My grandmother bought every bit of that property.
Ten years old.
But who owns these? Or y'all, y'all have a deed to these?
No, nobody owns it. It's always been open. It's al- he's always, Sloan's always had his fence line and we've always had our fence line. So it's always been, you know, like almost looks like a road when you come off it, Rooney Road, it's off of Jack County. It's always been there.
This precinct is associated with Jewish shit.
But I know my, uh, when I'm, got all my estimate for my house, the well was nothing but eighteen thousand dollars, you know, to, as just kind of like a comfort, you know, whether they have to drill that deep, you know, but.
Probably three hundred fifty plus right there.
I think, uh, Terrence said that Micah had them come out and I wanna say even think he had him drill like seven hundred feet, but then he had that extra water tank go over the front side of that place, you know, but.
That's not the side of water like it's on the area. You gotta get.
Me and Billy myself was not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I live in, I already live in German, or now I live on Old Route fourteen, whatever, not even one of them. I have two water wells on that place and the calcium deposits.
No, I, I worked for a cold and welding, I, right out of high school, but you're gonna, you're gonna stink the rest of the day.
You better get a water softener.
Oh, yes.
Thirty years on the, that's.
Yeah, I talked to.
That's just one house. I'm, I'm contracted.
And we get this agreed to, I mean, my wife's already said we're gonna go this Saturday and sign on ours, but, you know, we just need to agree to it because we can't even, his concrete trucks won't even go back there right now with all the rain that we've had in the last couple of weeks.
They will, they said they could start.
Yeah. Yeah, we got tractors, but we want that.
So we don't have, we have an actual county easement there, but do we have a closure on it?
Do we know it's a county easement?
I don't know.
Have y'all done the tie, have y'all done the property work to know who owns that land?
It's not on my survey.
It shows, even his builder.
But like I have, I have plans that I have an easement that doesn't show up on any, you know, anyone's survey or anything. I don't know. You've got to do courthouse. Y'all.
We, yeah, we've done all that. I've, I've had a survey for, I mean, the fifty.
I mean, everything that we've, I've, that I've come across, it calls it as Young, you know, a Young County road.
Was it ever a Young County road? Was it ever, I mean, was it ever, do you know if it was ever a Young County road?
It always stopped at the county line first. The only thing that I can say is that I've, when I worked in dispatch, we did have a death out there. And then we had to take, send them to Rooney Road. And it, you, it was just a lease road, is what we were told.
Yeah. Which, that's just an easement. I mean, a lease road typically.
What?
Marsha's there.
Yes.
Marsha's, with our nine-one-one coordinator for several years, who asked her if anything, like I said, the guy that I've had working with me she's been there thirty years, has never done anything with it.
And I know Dennis, he put, you know, cattle guards across there just because, you know, he got tired of people driving down there and turning around and hitting the fence, so he put cattle guards to block people. But now, you know, we have a property, we wanna build houses out there, you know.
What this looks to me like though is that as this property kind of got divided up over the years, that there was just an easement that allows you to get to the county roads at this time of.
So Jack County calls it a county road, but we'll get to that again when we stop calling it a county road.
Cause I mean, it looks like, you know, I mean, before we dozered it, you could walk that whole quote unquote easement as you're calling it, all the way to the loving ranch.
That's twenty-four foot.
And there wasn't, there's, I mean, there's a gate back there that, that people that own the loving ranch, they could've got it.
But that, but that gate could have been put in by the oil field, right, and to, to service wells and stuff.
At one point somebody had driven some.
You would've thought that, you know.
Right, but just, I mean, you'd, I mean, every, like, like every, when you, when you build those oil field roads, you don't, those don't turn into.
But I, I would've thought that, you know, if they would've done that, if the oil field company was gonna do that, they're not gonna be driving trucks down there. They're gonna put gravel in.
Since my, that's a given, the oil grid, you know.
Well, the way that most roads become county roads, uh, even in the past, they were brought up to the standard of what a county road is. And what the court said is the standard, and then they have to be adopted once they're established. They, it's not like you can come in and ask to have a road built and establish a road by using the county. You know what I'm saying? Uh, and then they, they're up for consideration of adoption until that road is actually a county road. Uh, to the point that it meets the standard of most county roads in the county, we can't even think about adopting it.
And that's what we, we were told to do though, is to come up here to y'all to try to get it established.
In Jack County, but in Young County, it is not even up to the standard of, uh, uh, of a county road. Like you said, you can't get trucks down, it's not wide enough. It doesn't meet the criteria to build. Well, it is now after you dozed it, but it's still not certified or anything like that.
I kinda feel like somebody needs to do some work to find out who, who technically owns that land.
We never maintained it as a county road.
Did the, does the county own that land though?
Does it own the land?
Who owns the land?
The pieces, the, what he's asking is the easement that's between Sloan's property and our property, between our two fence lines.
Who owns that?
I would have to ask Michael Hawkins, he probably would count as him.
I don't know either.
Mike has been driving down that driveway on property that knows.
Right, but, I mean, you know, there, there are, there are deed of easements and that.
Yeah, yeah, you were thinking that somebody's gonna have to do something.
Somebody, somebody owns that land.
Does it show that you have an easement on your, 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 uh, survey?
I mean, from what Dennis says, he, you know, we own it.
Okay, so y'all own the.
That's what Dennis said, you know, but I don't know.
So if y'all own the easement, then it, then the county don't want to leave y'all.
But that makes it a problem.
I just don't understand how Dennis knows because, you know, when Alma bought that, I call her Alma, Ellen Light, my grandmother, bought that property, that was already there. You know, all Dennis did was come in years ago and redo this fence line because the fence was coming apart and he was having cows get out.
Dennis owned the place right there when it first come off the road.
Right. You know, but this is always, this piece right here between these two fence lines has always been there. You know, cause me and Kevin used to drive them all the way back here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet that at some point, there's other land back here, it's on back here, that had to get that easement to get back there to them. So they had to have an easement because it's the same technique, you can landline somebody unless you have an easement. And if Dennis is saying that y'all own that easement, that's why y'all own the easement because the only way y'all can get to y'all's land is through that easement right there.
We have to go back and see if it was ever adopted as a county railway.
And those. Lot, lot of taxes, tax money, government, it's kept. Almost be about a thousand. That's what I don't understand. Twenty seventy-six thousand dollars, thirty year penalty times two.
Well, it's, it's kinda like these subdivisions that are going in out here south of town. Uh, they're building their own roads in. Uh, they're HOA in them. It, it, the county's not going in and building them roads just because they built million dollar homes down there.
They're building, they're building, building the customer.
You know, they're gonna, they're gonna add the, the price into.
Right, but you're the customer.
But you're the customer yourself right here.
Yeah, the, the counties, the counties are not taking those roads up. Matter of fact, our roads are ready to say it's, we will not take them. Subdivided county road because we don't have a man hired that's done to do it or the money to do it. Which I would say if you was, if y'all was to build a road and were to deal with Jack County, they would probably agree. Since they're right there. That'd have to be something you'd have to talk to Terry about.
And then we'd have to do an interlocal agreement.
Do an interlocal agreement.
But I wouldn't have probably done an interlocal agreement with them, but the deal of it is, is we can't go in and just build a road just because we're gaining tax value because as far as what the road bridge gets from that tax value is mine loot compared to what the actual property value is.
Think about how it is to get to it too. Y'all have to leave the county to even get back in there. I mean, it's not a, it doesn't make a ton of sense.
You say that, Commissioner, but you're also doing two hours. Not going to. That's what I'm trying to say. We're talking about years of tax money coming in to the county. That they're no longer gonna build their homes.
You're quite rough with that as your expense, you can go ahead and build.
Yeah, I could. I could have homes, but I don't wanna keep the maintenance up. Or I can just move onto the Jack County, since they call it the county road and just put it to the. Never there to start a life.
And if we come in and we, we, we did this, we get somebody else that wants to build our own property that has an easement, then we're looking at having to adopt the next road.
No, it's in the, it's in the.
We open that, we're gonna, we're gonna put ourselves in a position to where even our subcontractor here, our contractor's gonna be looking, hey, we're doing this. We want y'all to adopt this road. We can't do that.
I mean, it's not really adopting, I mean, Jack County's already calling it a county road. All we're trying to do is just extend that county road that already a county road into Young County.
Thirteen thousand dollars.
You know, it's really not adopting the road.
I mean, to me, it looks like you're asking us to create a new county road.
No, it's already a county road for Jack County. It's just that it's gonna be, it's not on Young County. What if it's on, we're on Young County.
Here's the thing though, if that easement's in y'all's name, we can do it.
Right, and, and it's not, I mean.
Well, if Dennis said it was, then Dennis may know what a doctor is, but until we find that part out right there, that's the thing.
You know, cause when he had his, when he had his property survey, the metal rod that they. You know, cause when he had his, when he had his property survey, the metal rod that they have in the ground is literally right there by the fence. You know, it's not out, I mean, it's not on Sloan's side, it's not in the middle of the road, it's by our fence.
We need documentation to see that that is not private road, and we can't put our material on private road. If that's a private road, then we can't do that, if it's county road, you bring us documentation then, then we can, we can move forward with that, right?
We could.
We could.
But then you go back and be able to do it.
So, I mean, even though his survey shows that it's a, I mean.
Was the survey.
The guy that crossed that, that had, he showed us the survey that he had on his phone, and it literally said county road.
We're saying it, and actually, we, we gotta have our documentation. What survey is that? What, what documentation should we have? I have two surveys.
You'd get a landman to actually go.
I just said the two separate companies, let's say, all the shows. I don't know what else.
So he had it, uh, three years.
Savings on our. So I guess what we're saying is, is that county road, and then that survey, they can't. It doesn't spell out who, who owns it, survey. It says county, it says CR county.
And I'll just, I'll, you know, another question.
Do you have the name of the county road?
Roney Road.
Roney?
Yeah. Because when we went and got the nine one one addresses, that's the, that's the road that they gave us, you know, mine's like fifty-four seventeen Roney Road, not, okay, well, if they're calling it Roney Road, nine one one's calling it not Roney Road, so it's like, and it has to be Roney Road.
Kinda like ours, my dad has it. If you go up nine one one address, it's on, it's on Main Benro. But he, him driveway goes a mile back into this property. It doesn't make it far.
Right, and then it's, it's not on our property, we're, we're gonna go, the fence line, fence line, our property, let's say that this is our property. We gotta go in ours, we're just wanting this part.
About a year ago here.
Not here, but. Sure, if you want to, but we just want the, this Roney Road extended so we can get up into the property to go build the houses.
Is that the county line there?
Technically, we can go up there.
And what is a box road?
Doesn't even come up on the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, box, what it is, you can't even, uh, repair your town. Box road doesn't even come up on here.
So how do we know where box road even came up, cause our nine one one address.
Box road, they'll say it starts right here, right?
You would've thought if it was box road, our addresses would've been box road.
But because nine one one didn't recognize, say, a Roney Road, matter of fact, they recognize that whole road through that horn right there with the Indians.
All the way to the loading range.
No, just to that, where Indians are out there, spare town. Yes. Well, what that deal is, is it's, that's a lease road.
But this, this is Roney Road. Go up and around right here. But this is Roney Road right here, right? You're saying Roney Road should come this way?
Yeah, this is. I've seen the road before, I've seen it, but it would gate it off when I was down there.
Right.
That's cause people kept going down there getting stuff. It is, it's.
The road was originally gated off. You can't have a game.
Well, that's not it, Dennis put cattle guards across it, it wasn't a game. It was cattle guards to keep people from going down to where our property is and getting stuck.
Young people going out there kissing.
Yeah. And he did that back when I was sixteen years old.
I'd like to see some of the survey from, to where y'all can, can I have a group of each county to make a motor boy?
Well, even, even that, there's still a process.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's to adopt, it has to be brought up to standards of being a county road, that's not a county that expands.
And if they're gonna spend the money, then they just go to themselves, they have to gate it to do it.
Not worth it. Yeah, I kinda agree, we need to see more information.
We need to get more information on it first, but then, eh, there's still a lot to do to consider as an adopted county road if it's, and to adopt a road, it has to be to the standard of what's considered a county road.
So, oh, we have to put the gravel in and everything?
That would be.
And then, yada, yada.
That's how typical, yeah, it would. Typically, a road's built and then it gets taken over by the county, if the county wanted to turn it into a county road, but this one's a hard one because
We need to find out that.
You can't get to it very easy from our county. You have to leave the county to, yeah, have to kind of circle into it.
Right, I talked to Dennis about that, he said, you know, that Jack's road would probably take out, you know, take care of.
Who's Dennis?
Um, he's the one that lives at the very front of the road.
Did it wrong.
He lives on, right there, basically on that corner of twenty-nine fifteen. I don't know if this house is on there.
I know, like, my house is on a road that used to be a county road, but the county didn't maintain it, it's just kind of turned into privately maintained gravel road, getting found out.
The original county easement goes right beside my back door. But it was infeasible to build a road, the direction of easement was, uh, so that easement's not moving. I mean, as far as anybody maintaining a road through there. Uh, the, as the surveyors say, this road's in the wrong spot when they start taking land out there.
So once my house is built, garden wrecks are armed, ambulance can get there.
Same thing on like on any kind of lease, you've got an easement to be able to get there, so you, you know, the, that easement, but the nine one one dressed the edge of that east and kind of just noted on that.
And probably, if you have postal service does their own deal on that, you, more than likely, you're not gonna have an address that delivers mail to your house anyway, you're gonna have it, but be a boxer, you're gonna have a mailbox on the side of the road that everybody has.
Now, they're, they're all the way down Roney Road to deliver.
We can find out some more research, John.
Okay, any else on this? All right, we'll just table, we'll just call, call this a no action if we get some more information, we can talk about it again. Thank you. Item number twenty, discuss and consider requesting sealed bids for road material, asphalt products, culverts, tires, tubes, and fuel. Seal bids be open Monday, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three at ten a.m. What is, I don't know, what's this one, whose item is it?
We do it every year, we know.
Oh.
I've had some issues, um, in some of the bids, um, one of the people, I mean, this morning, I sent it real quickly, but sometimes I don't get it. And sometimes I can't bite my teeth or do a thing, but, anyway, I set up, uh, sent this to the paper and I read it on the eighteenth, Saturday, the eighteenth, Tuesday, twenty-nine, and then gonna open it in my office on December eighth, is that what it says by four o'clock?
You said it's open December eleventh at ten a.m.
Yeah, but haven't been my office by four o'clock on the eighth, little for five.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
Motion from Commissioner Wiley, is this not a motion thing? Oh, motion from Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. We'll have to take a motion from Commissioner Rogers, do we have a second? Second for Commissioner Crestwell, any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed or abstained? All right, so that's the four oh one, Commissioner Wiley abstains please. Thank you, apologies. All right, item number twenty-one, discuss and consider the demolition of four oh three Second Street House. This is our rent house next door to the Young County Annex, um, our tenant has left. Um, the building is in terrible condition, it is.
You, you went in.
I did. It is, it is disgusting.
Yeah, it took you bad when you left, didn't it?
Oh, my gosh, it is.
I did about that far after I left.
The living conditions, ugh, whatever. Um, I talked to Jim Don in Grand Fire Department about would this house be something you'd be interested in doing a training exercise on since, um, the idea has been that we're gonna demolish this house. He said that the way the regulations and the laws are set up, they, you almost just cannot burn a house inside of city limits anymore, you have to, you have to, the, the time and expense to prepare a house to burn inside the city limits are, um, makes it, make it infeasible, however, they would, um, if we were okay with it, they'd like to go in and practice their, what's the term, Jimmy? Where they do, they, they cut the, then, but you know. But they could do a training where they could not burn the building, but, but kind of practice what they do for burning building. And he made it sound like it would be something that they would be, be excited about, so.
Can they include the volunteers? I mean, I know they're not supposed to enter buildings, but at least see.
I think they can include anyone they want, but, but the, the question I would like, or I put this on the agenda, like, uh, I'm, I am asking Fisher's Court to authorize the demolition of, of that house. And prior to demolition, if it can be used for fire training to, uh, encourage our fire departments to use for training. Motion from Commissioner Crestwell, we have second, second from Commissioner Wiley, any discussion or comment on it, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Go, drop the, go, drop one, we'll give it to a period.
Right now, we've got, the gas meter's getting disconnected, so there's no gas going to.
Electricity's off.
Electricity's been cut off.
Water's off, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the city to remove that water meter, they don't think they need a water meter.
No.
Ask the city to remove the water meter.
We're gonna have enough, uh, inload trucks to haul it off, or do we need to line up a truck or two up here?
It kind of thing, we might have to get a truck out, but you gotta wait, you gotta.
I have, I have disposal spot, I'm ready to go whenever y'all are, I just don't have any indoes.
We got the box till, let's see if, when that hits one, but it'll get a gage on it. Look if I get it all out.
So we have county, in county, down.
In county, yeah.
Yeah, we'd save money.
Save a ton of money.
That's what we like.
That's what we like.
That's what we like.
We'll get down the line.
I tell you, uh, just from a, from a bio- biological reason, I just hope that we were gonna burn that. Oh, and, you know, uh, I.
You can ask me when we're off the record, I'll tell you.
Um, item number twenty-two, discuss and consider the burn restrictions, do we need to, anyone wanna discuss?
No action.
No action? All right, it, we'll take a little break.
We have a supplement to the agenda you wanna do in.
Oh, you wanna do that real quick and then we'll go into closed session?
Yeah.
Supplemental agenda, discuss and consider accepting bids for the HVAC system for precinct one annex presented by.
That's on a Jimmy Friday, but, yes. Jimmy was like on vacation, not doing stuff out early.
And it's three different units or three different bids?
It's three different units. One bid come in way higher than what we had allowed for this, that I got. This bid is doing three units, replacing the front unit for the office is for the, uh, act extension office. Uh, it's six thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents, and that's installed, then the back meeting room area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the total of it's only fourteen thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-seven.
I see this came under budget.
It came under budget with this bill. It also made it to where the meeting room would have its own HVAC system and not shared with my office. The two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five would put a, uh, one of the mini splits into my office to where we would have separate air conditioning, so the way it is right now during the summer, we freeze the, uh, meeting room and my office is burning up hot. So, this would make it to where we wouldn't have to share the.
That's why you've lost so much weight.
Melting it off. But it comes in under budget and it, it, it gives us opportunity to add that other unit in there as a mini split. To where the office that I, that I got back out of is separate from the rest of the building.
All right, Commissioner Shook has made a motion that we accept this under budget bid. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. It is eleven twenty, and we'll go into closed section, session, and we'll take a little bathroom break before closed session.
She's gonna steal your coffee now. She's got it ready.
Did you hear the one, the only thing where we're gonna, we approve making, uh, tax assessment collection position and all, we got full time?
No, I missed it, that's great.
Yeah, it's great.
So who's, I know, well, we have a really exciting thing going on at the museum, and they all set it up.
There's always exciting things happening at museums.
We're doing oral history, so.